Councillors would appreciate if members of the parliament would refrain from refrain from talking or making multiple comments while the council meeting is in progress. Your assistance in this regard is appreciated. Acknowledgement, we acknowledge the Boondala people with traditional owners in this land which you met today. And pay our respects to their elders past and present. And extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are present today. And a civic prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to grant thy blessing upon the work of this council. In the record and prosperous deliberations, the advancement of this city and the true and lasting welfare of the Peabody's municipality. Amen. And the obituary notices. And then who will stand please? Colin Rodder. James Edgell. Mary Anne Maxwell. Patricia Cropton. Ethel Sloan. Gregory Marr. Frank House. John Ridgely. Shirley Simmons. Raymond Giltrap. Liam Sheedy. Kathleen Smart. Peter Yendall. Derek Starkey. And Mukaseva Ozik. If we can stand for a few minutes of respect please. Thank you. And we have apologies today from councillor Claude Picard. I would like to welcome Phil Stone, uh, Phil Stone rather, sorry Phil, um, to the meeting. I hope Phil is back in this chair within round about the next fortnight. I look forward to that. Um, also it's a big birthday for a council member today. Right? But I don't know how many years, but happy birthday. Um, council member executive, oh, sorry, reducing me too not to, uh, to welcome the audit committee here today. As I mentioned, we are going to have a workshop at a point in the meeting. And we may also go into confidence when we have that wrapped with that workshop. So, council member executive declarations, any conflicts of interest from anybody?
Yeah, I will, the, the only stuff, so.
And councillor Westerman?
Yeah, I've got three items. Um, conflict of interest for item thirteen point one point one. Um, as other family, family member who runs the Walder basketball club. And my other two are thirteen point two point four and thirteen point two point ten, as they both mentioned in the item department. I'll make that very please.
Thank you.
Just for the purpose of the minutes, just getting an indication of what is intended to do in terms of managing physical conflicts.
What are you managing?
I'll just leave the room of discussion.
Okay. Any gifts and benefits received, any gifts and benefits received by anybody? Hello? Minutes of the previous meeting held on Monday twenty third of January two thousand twenty, January two thousand twenty three. Will I move? Yes, on, getting councillor Westerman?
Can I also have my name on the president list at that meeting?
All in favour? Confirmation of minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday thirteenth of January two thousand twenty three. Someone like to move? Councillor Simpson, councillor Forner. Any questions or anything rising? If not, all in favour? Aye. And six three confirmation of minutes of special council meeting held on Monday thirteenth of February two thousand twenty three. Move by councillor Pond, send with councillor Forner. All in favour? Aye. We have no deputations or presentations at this stage, no petitions, matters lying on the table. Uh, we've dealt with that now, haven't we? Yeah, so that's all done, one one. Um, public question time. Have we got any included? No, they don't have any? Okay. I'm going to read through the screen here, so I'm going to wait for the screen to catch up, so. Um, council members' activities, you have all of those before you. Um, does anybody want to raise anything from their attendances? Nope. Thank you. They're all there anyway, if you want to have a read of them. Oh, let's come in, seven three. All been very busy. The renewal committee reports. Also, we are supposed to be with us for a minute. It's not me. Right, thanks, this is thirteen one one, chief executive office action report. Is there anything you wish to make mention of?
Uh, just through the chair, I'll take the report as read, please, to respond to any questions or comments that any councillor has. I did want to just provide two quick verbal updates. Not directly related, but I'll take the opportunity, one of the items on there is around the Cuttlefish Coast Santrine Tourism and Remental Management Project. Along title, um, just as a first opportunity to acknowledge that we now have our cuttlefish aggregation sites in the national heritage list, so um, that has been a long time coming and very excited. And, um, I took the opportunity to send a text message to some of our state government, um, CEOs over the weekend to just, um, put in their mind that it's now of national heritage significance, that's all. Um, and then the second item I just wanted to touch on was the, um, presentation that was provided to the state government, um, um, CEO delegation last week. Um, Jade Valentine and myself, uh, attended the steering committee meeting for, um, um, for part of that meeting to talk about some of the items that we discussed in the, the, um, I don't know, the briefing session on the Monday night. Uh, I think the summary version was that, I think the, the Cs were generally well engaged, um, and understood, um, uh, some of the opportunities and challenges before us. Um, the, at the steering committee, there was no commitments made other than to, uh, that it was the start of the discussion and that, um, a number of them were keen to further those discussions. Year after, so, um, we'll be scheduling meetings with a number of the key Cs over the coming weeks to progress those conversations. We just wanted to round out that for the benefit of the elected members. You happy to respond to any questions, ma'am?
Do you have any questions? Aye. Come up to the right one. Uh, someone like to move? Have we received the report, received the note, the report? On, councillor Forner? All in favour? Aye. Documentary election, Spencer Guy, senior regional group thinking members representative of Starlock. We've got a council nominating Phil Stone. What a question, had we not already nominated Phil and are we not now voting for Phil?
The mayor, we are voting for the mayor, so I've got the wrong words there. It's a bill of these for the council to confirm he's voted for one of the two mayoral contenders for the Starlock position.
Ready to move in a second there? Move councillor Pond, second councillor Forner?
Change the wording.
Change, not match, to confirm.
Turn to side.
Reminds it's vote for.
All in favour? Aye. Opposites versus ordinary report, the number two one, the workshop post capital program, twenty twenty three, twenty four. This is the point where you wanted to suspend procedures? We'd like to suspend meeting procedures to have a more inclusive chat in the capital works program for next year. So would someone like to move that suspend standing orders for the, for a period of, say, how long?
Eight minutes.
Thirty minutes. Mr Simpson, councillor Westerman? Favour? Aye. How about you guys?
Thank you, everyone. Um, so this is the first of the three budget workshops with elected members that we had, um, timed in for, uh, this new business plan and budget cycle. Um, so tonight we're going to sort of give the first, uh, run through and draft of the capital, uh, budget. Um, that's been developed so far and have some discussions around that. Um, and then we can draw like little, um, takeaways from tonight that we can then discuss, um, at a workshop next week. So that's where we'll get more into the operating budget, so we can discuss further, uh, the capital budget. Um, and then there'll be a third workshop in conjunction with the training on the Tuesday the fourteenth. Um, so you actually will be here, um, doing training, um, some of the compulsory training for elected members, but that's why we'll talk through a bit of variety policy. Um, and those, and any other items that, um, councillors wish to discuss at that, um, workshop. So, um, this is just a bit of an agenda for tonight, so just relook at the budget parameters which council adopted. Um, earlier in the process, I think we did that back in December. Um, then we've got, we've sort of broken the capital program into, first we'll talk about capital projects that are already approved, that are continuing into next year. That just gives a bit of context, I think, around, um, the amount of works we have ongoing. Um, then we'll talk about the development of the renewal, our renewal programs, so current assets. Um, and then we'll talk about, um, what the, what currently is in the program for new assets and why allocation we have, um, available. So, um, yeah, we'll get into that. So with the, um, budget parameters, um, these are the seven that council, um, have previously adopted. Um, and why all of them are, um, important to the development of this, I think that we just highlight there the two key ones specifically around the capital program. So, um, the one there is sort of dealing with current assets, um, and council's, um, parameter there is that we will fund our, um, renewal programs. Um, and when we get into renewal programs, we'll talk quickly about how, again, about how they're sort of developed. Um, so that's, um, yeah, council sort of funding renewal as and when it falls due, um, and fully maintaining our current assets. Um, and that will only improve, um, new and upgraded capital projects where we can sort of, where the borrowing capacity, the capacity to fund it ongoing. And so that's, uh, when we get to that section, we'll talk about, uh, the assumptions involved and explain about funding, um, new projects. All right, so then we'll get into retimes. So there's two slides, so we'll first talk about the retime renewal, um, program. Right, um, so often with our capital programs, especially when we will, there's a few, uh, large items that we have in our, um, in our capital program and during, um, budget reviews, so that quarter two budget review is on the, uh, agenda for tonight. Um, that's where we'll often look at whether our projects are going to spread across more than one year. So the, um, there's a few items here at the top that are large projects where those commence in the current financial year and then go across to next year. So the Walder Health and Leisure Centre, um, renewal, so that's about to go to market very shortly. Um, and then that will commence, um, the Walder Marina is subject to a funding bid, so that project has sort of been bundled up and got ready. Um, we've got a funding bid in to see whether we can get some, some funds for that. And while that project may start in this financial year, most of it will probably actually fall into next financial year. And there are a couple of other items there, so the foreshore toilets, a few of the playgrounds, uh, were retimed earlier in the year and refunded under the, like, roads and community infrastructure program from next year. I just freed up some funds for some, um, building works this year that were over budget. Some of the current, you know, uh, stresses on the capital budget with, um, tenders coming a bit above, um, budget, um, in some items. So, but I get, but the top two are really the major ones there in terms of budget amounts. And then move on to the, uh, capital projects, so a new asset, so there's a few here, so we've got some, uh, the different colors there. Um, it's just showing that some of these items have actually been deferred even past next financial year and we'll talk through, um, some of that. So, um, the first one up there is the childcare center upgrade, so that one we've retimed some of the expenditure across to next year. Um, that's currently out for tender and we're working through the tenders now, but the works will come out in the next year. Um, next few items, so there's two stormwater items there, so the Broadway Terrace and Newton Street Stormwater was deferred. Um, because we went out to the market and, um, didn't get, um, very responses on that. Three times, uh, the, the estimated value from, from the, um, expert valuations we got for that work. So obviously the market is not quite ready for that project at the moment. Um, and there's some, there's been some discussion in-house that with, um, less residential development happening around the, um, the H K facility down there that was originally, I think, envisioned. I think the need for those works have, um, dropped a little bit in importance. And there's some talk about whether Valley One itself is actually quite a large project overall, will probably need potentially seven million or more to do all the stages of Valley One, and I think that's the highest priority within our stormwater management plan. So there's some talk and that will be a discussion for next year's budget, whether maybe those accounts get rolled together at Valley One because our, our big, um, stormwater project that we push ahead with. Um, but with other works that are ongoing at the moment, um, there's been, that, that's, that work has been pushed out to twenty four, twenty five at this time. And then the Northern coastline campsite, so that was part of that report we brought back to council, um, a couple of months ago. Um, these are the, the projects that can't go anywhere, the, uh, the need for an new one at this stage. So we've returned, um, you know, a portion of the funding back to the state government, sort of quarantined our contribution and move that ahead to a future year. So that, once we've worked through some of those issues, we can look to go for some matching funding again to push along some of those projects along the northern coastline. Um, so then, um, so as you can see, oh, and then there's some other items in our current budget that haven't been retimed yet, but I likely to have some expenditure moved out. So the South Life Estate Club development was definitely, I think, that they'll, um, have some money pushed out. Um, we did put in an allocation this year for the walking trail program based on the fact that we were working on the master plan. The must plans, you know, only getting to the point of finalization now, so it's likely that will push some bucks out there, um, to next year. Sealing up Gulf Pue Road, we're just working through the design works, um, that, so that allocation may not be spent this year. Plant replacement program, um, that's just a ongoing fund with, um, replacement at the moment, you order them and sometimes things are taking sort of twelve to twenty four months to arrive. So it's not from lack of, um, yeah, getting the orders in, it's just not arriving on time. And irrigation renewal, we're funding up, uh, potentially into next year to deliver a pump station. So as you can see, there's a whole bunch of items that are moving along, uh, a portion of them will end up being next year. And then we'll get into the development of our actual renewal program. So, um, but we did discuss this, um, when we had our first sort of budget discussion back in December, I think, um, about our renewal programs. Our renewal programs are developed based on, uh, sort of significant data that council have for each asset class. So council on a, on a five year cycle will go out and fully renew, uh, I'm sorry, fully value out each asset class. Uh, and at the same time, we collect, um, condition data which informs when assets are due for renewal. So when we, um, come to each year's budget cycle, um, that data is assessed on the ground. So obviously the data will tell us, these are the things that are due for renewal. And then our asset team will, uh, go out and do sort of on the ground, um, looking at the sort of what years one, two and three of that program and see if things need to be slightly tweaked and retyped. You know, sometimes the data's slightly out, but it does give us that, that good view of where things are due for renewal. Um, and so they'll work through that for our, sort of our, our major asset classes and then we bring that, obviously, uh, we develop that into a program to present to council. Um, and, and as I said earlier on, our parameter is that we will renew assets sort of as and when they fall due for renewal. Um, so our transport program, we've put that up here, but this is, um, we've now rolled our transport program into a three year, um, rolling program. So we've already gone out to the market, um, for the sealed roads, paths and curbs, um, to be delivered over three years. So this is just the second year allocation of that program. Um, and, and as we spoke about earlier, that's obviously up more of a long term. That's the spend we'd be expecting now, obviously for a couple of years there, we spent sort of four and a half million a year, um, to, to deal with a bit of a backlog. But now we've got our program back to a more normal standard, uh, position. So that's sort of our long term spend is somewhere in between that one and a half and two and a half million a year. Uh, the irrigation program, sorry, that's, uh, is, we've got a hundred and nineteen thousand in there. Of course, we've got a hundred thousand from the current year that we think will be rolled together and that will deliver, uh, replacement of, um, a sort of, of power compensation that's right at end of life. Um, so that's, uh, a lot of work's been done internally around our irrigation program for the next ten years. That's sort of our last asset class that, um, needed to have that developed. Um, and so that now, work has been done, so there'll be a few pump stations in the first, um, sort of three to four years of that program and then we'll get more into replacing sort of a lot, uh, big sections of, uh, pipe, uh, actual piping in that after that. Um, so buildings, so buildings actually have quite a large spend planned for next year. And you've seen the top one up there is actually the health and leisure center. So we've already got a budget allocated, um, in the current budget, um, that was approved. And what the scope of that project has become is that a lot of work has to be also done on the plant ring. So that wasn't in that original budget that we had already approved by council, but we did have an allocation in our long term financial plan. And it actually makes sense to tender all that work together as one big package and, and get that all done. So that'll be renewal of the, the main pools, like the tiling and the surrounds, um, but also dealing with, um, significant plant ring works. Um, so now all of that, basically that will finish the renewal that's needed on the leisure center in the near future. Um, and there won't be, uh, there will be an allocation, I think, further down the plan for some other works, but, um, yeah, that, that this is one of the current issues at the, at the center. One that's come up is, so our current cremator is at basically an end of life. Um, so that's something that needs to be replaced. So just for, um, a bit of context on that one, we actually, um, our income, our annual income from our, um, cremation services is a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So, um, if we don't replace the cremator, that income will disappear. Um, and so you can see that the, the sort of payoff period for that investment to renew that asset is sort of just over five years for something that would be expected to last sort of somewhere between twenty and thirty years, twenty five at an average. So I think that one, while it's, um, yeah, a big item on the thing, I think that one with the income generation is a, is something that, um, has to happen. Obviously, we are one of the, um, only, um, if we don't provide cremation services, not really any other, um, options for, for me to be doing that in, in the, in the region. So, um, but what we will do with that, we're going to, we're doing a bit of a review of our fees and charges and making sure that our, our fees are, um, at the, set at the right level. So, um, we're just doing a bit of benchmarking against, um, uh, in Adelaide law cremation services costs, that sort of thing, to see whether our fees need to be tweaked a little bit. But, um, that is actually, uh, a slight problem making item for council. Um, then we get into the library, so the library, it's a disgusting building, but it's now sort of, uh, just over ten years old. And some of the, um, sort of fittings, those sorts of things are getting, are at an end of life that need a replacement. So the significant, so we've actually got a budget hit next year for the library, but we also have an allocation the year after. So there's about a half a million dollar spend, um, uh, budgeted over the next two years for the library. So part one of that is, um, the whole, the whole floors are due to be redone. Uh, so that's sort of an, um, ensuring that they're protected and continue on. And also the air conditioning, uh, needs replacing, some way has never fully, uh, probably functioned at the highest level it could have anyway, but those units are at end of life. So that's year one, um, and year two is leading out to the, uh, the awnings, uh, the blinds. Uh, and so some of that will actually work in with hopefully getting the air conditioning working at an optimal as well, um, in terms of the flow that we would um, it was the park toilets, so we, sort of a bit of discussion with, as of a previous year budget, we decided that, um, we would be renewing toilets every year. Uh, yeah, through, uh, some of that toilets were aged and, and not really up to standard. So, um, Wilson Park is flagged as the toilet for renewal for next year. Um, put in allocation of a hundred and fifty thousand, um, but that's been our sort of standard, we did a couple this year that we've got in the budget. Um, the first one of them we're about to, to deliver around the city park, doing public consultations. So we'll see whether those budgets are appropriate for, for what we need to deliver. Um, with the current upgrade of the childcare center, what we found is, is, um, it's likely that the, the cost of those one of the works will be a little bit above what we had budgeted. But what we've found is in our actual renewal programs over the next couple of years, some of the items that we had budgeted that we're going to be doing in the upgrade are actually budgeted within our renewal budget already. So those rules obviously won't need to happen because they'll be done during the upgrade. So we were just looking at our funding model, have a discussion, I think it'll be a separate report, probably comes back to council about the total cost of those works. But, um, this allocation was already included in our renewal, uh, projections for the childcare center. Um, a few of the depot sheds are getting towards end of life, um, so we've got that allocation in there. That could maybe assist with some of the, perhaps things the D H S items, um, found during the audit. Some of that can be funded out of our sort of, um, our allocation from the scheme. Um, but yeah, some of the sheds may need replacing as well, so we've got that in there. So coincide and the Alex Ramsey Library, air conditioning is due. So this year, I believe, with some works happening on that building in the current year, roofing, that sort of thing, um, and air conditioning will be, um, due next year. So that's the building's one, and then we move on into open space. Um, so once again, when we're doing the upgrade works, there's actually some work included around the outside of the building as well. So there was actually some allocations within our open space sort of land improvements budget at the childcare center that would do in the next year or two as well. Um, swimming enclosure, um, is due for renewal and that's actually been included in that overall marina funding, um, bid that's gone in. Um, the busman court fencing A to R gardens, um, uh, due for renewal. Um, we always have two playgrounds, um, that come up each year, so then at Russell Street and McGee Street are the next two due for renewal. Um, once again, we've got a program of barbecue, replacing our barbecues and related infrastructure each year on a rolling basis. So there's some furniture and barbecues at, uh, Wilson Park and Ocean Avenue for renewal. And we've put the fish cleaning shelter in there, um, some discussions around what we can actually do with that due to E P A requirements. But the current structure is close to failure, so likely that that'll be heavy maintenance to stop it from, um, yeah, failing, but that we probably can't do a new one, um, without significant spending hours, so that might have to wait till later year. So that's, um, the renewal allocation. So yeah, I guess if there's any, um, discussion, um, and questions around any of them.
That's why you're talking about the basketball stadium, the basketball or fence it. Yeah, it was happy to volleyball, dude, we shut that down a couple of years ago, I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, we've got that flagged in whether we need an upgrade, so in our new upgrade, uh, items, we've got flagged whether council so, yep, good, we, we had that same discussion when, when this one came up.
Other questions?
So the swimming enclosure, so that's replacing what's currently there, that sectioned off area with the pontoon, is that right? So fully replacing it, is the new one going to go all the way down to the sea bed? So fully replacing it. Is the new one gonna go all the way down to the sea bed?
Yes.
Yeah, it definitely will. Awesome.
Well, to be designed and funded, but yeah, that that would be the intent, yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Bring us, oh, you're great. You talked about ceiling golf view road. What's golf view road?
Uh, check that. It's the road out to the shack. So we've progressively been doing some. Ceiling sections of that road.
Oh, yeah, I'm out one dog's way.
Yeah, um, the next sections are getting more. So we've done them in-house previously, like the pavement, and then had it sealed during our um renewal programs. They'll come on, seal the section. Um, but the next few sections that need doing um need more design, stormwater design work around them. So they're starting to get a little bit more complicated than the previous straight sections.
Just interesting, we had a couple of people complaining to me in the weekend about the the quality of the road out there, and especially a couple of his drive. That's apparently really bad Peter present because of the rain. But somebody was actually having a real bitch to be about the point of this right. So that's glad I can tell them that there's been some design like done around that.
Uh, I guess just to point out that we we only. We get about a hundred thousand dollars a year to do the unsealed roads, uh which are. We try, the team's been trying to make stretch to a kilometer at a time. Um, with some of the feedback, the feedback we've had from the shackies that the two presidents of the Shack Association has been quite positive. So it's only been the last couple of weeks that I've been hearing that uh there has been some some negative comments. Uh, about the race. That's the first we've heard of it. Um, I have spoken to the team about um. Taking that, if we receive the hundred thousand dollars, doing the shortest stretch of road and go with the quality over quantity. We really have been trying to stretch the money as far as we can. But if the if the roads aren't up to scratch, then we need to probably scale back the kilometer. Uh, so, you know, I would say five hundred meters uh and do a a better job of it in terms of the the road preparation for the base.
The timeframe, like to seal it, is the idea to seal the whole thing, sort of to to link up all the sections that are already. Oh, Ashwell on there. Is it, what's what's the sort of the timeframe of the bigger picture? But it's all fully sealed, that five year, five year, ten years that it got?
Yes, probably six years. Um. Right numbers, I believe, we've got six kilometres to go. We were progressing at about a kilometre a year. Um. Our progress isn't going to be as far actually going forward for two reasons. The first one is if the quality is in question, that we'll slow down and do shorter stretches uh but spend more money on it. The other problem we have is is getting into the uh is at the the stage in the the coastline, I mean, Colbert's. And there's steep runoff and things like that. So there's more design and there's more infrastructure that needs to go with not just the road or. The road base preparation. So those two things are going to make it a bit taking longer to cover the last six kilometres of road. Um, we are working with the state government as part of the hydrogen or the major projects. Uh, in terms of trying to see if we can get the state government on the board. I understand it's the northern coastline. Uh, with all the works going in there about hydrogen, you can get them to fund um that becoming a sealed road.
Have they benefited out of that? Uh, the roads that it goes to just the shackies and the ones that benefit, you're not in campus tourists.
Uh, I think coming out, uh, social license, I think it is, it's it's back, come back to the community. Uh, so as part of it, uh putting in an industrial park nearby. Uh, would they help us with some of our our social infrastructure? Uh, you know, the the cuttlefish, for instance, we know is a growing, a growing thing. Um. Those we had probably even eighteen months ago aren't big enough to cover in growth. So that's another project that we're looking at trying to get partnership with the state government on.
And just another quick question regarding the sealing of the roads, like those sealed roads seem fine. The negative feedback that I've received from a couple of different shack owners is that it's where it's been like hatched, which is fair, fair enough. I've got to make an effort. And it's the all of this that's come in has been sharper than the localized rocks. Yeah, that was the issue that always brought to my attention. So what do we do about that, my, sort of short to immediate term?
It's a difficult one. Um, yeah, it's a big part of it wants to say we don't have budget to work on those roads. Um, we tried, we've been trying to get that one kilometer of unsealed road done well. So that becomes the road base for next year where we can seal it. So there's been two things happening in parallel. We we push out um a kilometer of unsealed road. And then we seal the previous one kilometer that we done the year before. So we've been creeping along the sealed and the unsealed sections. Um, one of the things that we have done in the last probably twelve months is we've been using a different product. It's called road profiling. So where we've dug up all of our old bitumen roads, um it comes to like a bitumen chips type of product. We've been laying that and then covered with clay uh to forms a nice hard base. So the feedback we had was it had been successful. It's only been recently we've heard that they believe it's sharp. So. At this stage, we've done the best we can with the roads, with the budget we have. Um, to be able to go back and do other repairs and maintenance is going to be difficult because we only have the hundred thousand dollars a year to progress. I guess a decision could be made that next year we don't push out another kilometer. It could be that we use the hundred thousand dollars to go back and repair. Or or spend more time on the road that has already been done.
And special local roads as well?
Yeah, sure. Uh, we have also been doing data correction um around our roads. We've identified um the northern coastline and also the cuttlefish dive site um as uh significant tourism areas. And so something that um there is a fund of item called special local roads. And we believe those two areas probably qualify well in 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 that regard for going for grant funding. Um, in the past, while a political period probably been competing for the same money. Um, and there's probably been an agreement around the table about who who is going for it each year. Uh, while it hasn't always taken advantage of that, um but with our growing need and with this identifying the. Uh, the unsealed road is becoming an issue, having spent all the money on a sealed road. We've now moved on to the next item on the agenda, which is the unsealed. So um with hydrogen, with the cuttlefish, uh and with tourism being uh a a larger industry. Uh, we hope that we can um win some special local roads funding, which would add more money into the budget to allow us to do more out there.
One of the members of the audit committee might like to ask a question or turn or make a comment on the um on the capital budget. I think you're, I'm just wondering whether the members of the audit committee might like to make some comment on the the draft capital budget.
Need a resource for works program?
The short answer is yes. Uh, where we've seen delays in the in the last eighteen months, particularly with COVID has been. Um, with some of the the outsourcing of our architectural work and our design work. So in the past, we've been able to go out with the job and get turnaround very quickly in terms of uh design. Uh, more recently, um our experience has been that uh getting good architects and good designers to do some of our buildings. Um, and some of our our works around the the recreation centre and stormwater. Uh, the turnaround has been really slight. That's where we've found the bottlenecks. Um. In particular, it's funny being the rec center where we have struggled a bit. There's there's really only three uh companies in Australia that were. Uh, that we were aware of that could do the level of technical work that we required. And unfortunately, the architect we had. Um, broke his arm in a motorcycle accident in in November, which is the latest three months. Um, so it just shows how shallow the pool can be, part and the part, your excellent. Um. So that that's where we've been struggling. The other, the other thing that we have seen is some of the quotes have come in. So we we do get qualitative surveys in there to give us a fair idea about how much we could expect the projects to be. Uh, it was mentioned earlier around the the New Street and Essentia was avenue, uh important terrace of Stormwater. Um, where uh that was only quoted recently, I think seven hundred thousand or here and up. And the quote's now back in at two point three million. So it's not just thirty or forty percent in some cases, it's double or triple that we've been seeing. Um. That has been the other challenge during COVID and also potentially being a regional area. Um, with some of our projects, if I talk about the the Gerbey Park um unisex change room. We have gone back and scaled back the design. Uh, but it's been interesting because we, every time we scale back the design, the cost continues to go up. Uh, which was indication to us that the costs were rising quicker than we could reduce the service level of that project. Uh, so that is something that we have been um fighting over the last two years. Uh, so really it is just around the timing of those projects and also the funds when they they do it in the market. Um, but we are doing a much better job around planning a new one for delivering you too.
So with this spend, does it give any benefit to operational expenditure going forward? So does it produce any cost by spending this capital expenditure? And on the other side, by spending this money, does it add operational expenditure from a maintenance point of view of the activity?
In terms of the rec center, uh, I understand that that is really all money. Uh, we know that that would give us better water quality. Uh, and that'll give us a more availability for the pools uh for the public. So we know that that is going to be a benefit. Uh, we know the current system is very poor uh in terms of quality and also um. The maintenance money that we're looking to spend there. So that is a project that we should see a big return from. Um.
We're looking in aggregate rather than.
Yeah.
And so, a- and is this consistent with year one of the long term financial plan?
It's fairly. So we've worked very hard. There has been, as I said, as with ground truth stuff, we've done some movements um with the overall. And all the spend ahead. Um, so we've got the overall renewal spend fairly consistent with year one. Um, it's slightly out. Priorities of that, um we've, we've man, we're managing that through the through the budget process. Um. I I guess in terms of, I I think the ones that we've highlighted for this year, probably other than the rec center is the complicated one that may. Uh, should actually have hopefully a positive impact on our operating costs, um because the maintenance should drop off a bit. I think most, the majority of the other ones should be fairly neutral in terms of their effect on overall operating budgets. Then the assets that are at towards end of life, they're not necessarily high maintenance assets. So it may not bring our maintenance down too much, but they shouldn't create any new um maintenance pressures.
The aggregate cap expended, what's the aggregate spend? Because you gave it us four slides, but that was the total.
Um, I think we're looking at about six million for renewal. Um.
Oh, that's six. We're funding all of it or part of it.
Um, the vast majority, there's a few of the playgrounds um that we will be able to fund through that local, our local roads and community infrastructure um asset. Um, allocation. Um. But yeah, the the new ones that are in there next year, um the majority of them are council funded. Sort of renewals, you can struggle to find um specific funding streams. Uh, we shouldn't have to borrow. There should be more than funded by depreciation.
That, given the uh the difficulty, you might get in that are unexpectedly high. As a result of that, do you actually have a look back at um the value and the benefit you're getting from each of those proj- uh projects? And maybe look at reprioritizing at any stage or just continuing your projects irrespective of value?
Uh, with some of the stormwater, we've, we've looked at where a lot of the timing was right. Um, it was a big push down at Newton Street for a for age care uh expansion. And for that to go ahead, we had to have the stormwater in the ground first. Uh, that work uh for the age care is paused at the moment. And with the cost that we were getting in uh to do the work, we've also uh pushed out the program. So we would. With the urgency being removed from that stormwater project, we have pushed it back in the program around Newton Street. Um, the one with Valley One uh Stormwater, for instance. Uh, again, that's tied into um Civic Park and that in in the centre of town. So we feel like that's a a growing area of of urgency. And and that's why the the Valley One uh project remains on there.
Well, that's something to move from extension with his hand it's used up by thirty, so. Better move it to second half. New Council of Old, send new Councilman Simpson. All favor.
So I think that'd be more about, I think with where we've been having, I mean, our building works are probably the one other than that. On what um saw the one which was very exorbitant, that where we've probably been having biggest issues are with buildings. Um, and so I think the ones we've had so far over the last year or so, we've sort of taken them on a case by case basis. We've um um as Chris uh spoke to the um Jubilee Park. We did some rescoping and worked through how that could work. Um, it was a grant funded one. And we did consider whether just stopping and not doing the works was viable. Um, but you you know, in our each case, we've worked through whether that is. Um, for instance, the other big one has probably been the point, point of the colleges. And we brought a report back to council um on the on the cost there and what we thought the benefit was of still going ahead with the works. Um, in terms of what our funding, we had and our abilities to deliver those works later on, um if grant funding wasn't available. So we've been doing that sort of on a case by case basis where we've been having, um, yeah, costs coming much higher than the estimates.
You are prioritizing and spending. You had otherwise thought, just do you go back and look and say, well, this is something that we're doing. That a commercial operator. Some would be the job they're sent to. Obviously, it's important for community, spending a large amount of money on capital risks. I think I heard it a bit today, it's not making a profit or barely making a profit. It's a thing that is run in most places. Enterprise. Obviously, not necessarily going to create more income for you or or reduce costs. So there must be another reason why you're spending so much money. Yeah. Services perspective, but how regularly do you consider that?
Yeah, so with that upgrade, the business case for moving ahead with that upgrade and getting the funding that we got for that was based on it being. Um, cost neutral to council from the fact, so um the the centre will actually generate extra. Uh, places basically from the upgrade works, the expansion will actually allow um more places. So we did modeling on um. What the income after the upgrade would be compared to before and and looked at the. I'm only backed on our on our costs for depreciation interest and maintenance of that space. So um the decision to move ahead with that one was around um. The the upgrade works actually being self funded from from the extra income generated.
The extra income turn into a profitable tax with increased capacity, does the modeling being done, does it? This wasn't.
We've been moving it towards positive separately almost uh with reviewing our fees over time. So we're a bit different to the rest of the market. So we've been phasing them um up over time. And we're, the centre is almost at the point now where it's at a break even, uh if you don't pull in a sort of. The overhead cost of um using other council resources. If you look at the uh the centre by itself. Um, of course, some income direct point of view, it's sort of now getting to the, just into the profitable. Team of that sort of being separate. I think this project was sort of looked at separately, and I think it it might have been slightly cash positive from memory. Um, but I think like this fairly neutral or a little bit positive for this. We've been doing that sort of through the the overall fee structure of the childcare centre and and other policy changes that have happened over the last few years.
Is now a good time to ask a question of why, why is the council operating, why, why is the.
Yeah, I think that's a bigger question, um for us to be considered by ourselves, almost, I think, yeah, natural discussion.
Just um conscious of the time, we've been talking about the renewal budget, saying I shouldn't next slide some new assets. Um, just to respond in part to some of the questions from the audit committee, when we talk about renewal, it's essentially renewing buildings that are part of the service, current service offering. Um, and unfortunately, probably councillors in the past have done that. Um, the the process of trying to minimize the cost or the spend on some of our buildings. And that's left them in the state they're in at present. So it's always easy to not spend money on buildings, but it does catch up again. Um, that's right.
Yeah, and the last one was around our plant equipment, which are um renewed on a, yeah, on a service basis, um at end of life and fit with purpose. So that being quite significantly gone through, but obviously with our size of our fleet um and plant items, that's a pretty normal sort of budget for us. Um, with our equipment, uh the main one there was, we've been gifted some school crossing. With our equipment, uh, the main one there was, we've been gifted some school crossings by the state government, which they were nice to give for all councils. Although there was a policy change from the state government a few years ago, um, so we have got a renewal program for some of those school crossings. So we now need to upgrade to current standards.
Which school crossings are those? Because I haven't got aware of that and that, yeah, I've always met the cost of those for years and years. So I wasn't aware of the change, I'm just wondering which school crossings.
First one, uh, we were like the ones that we, ones where they were, um, sort of orange flashing light.
Yep.
Was, um, a lot of that need to be upgraded to proper crossings. Um, so I think the first one is the one just down the road from the new high school.
Yes, Nicholson Avenue, Norrie Avenue and it would likely also be, uh, Jenkins Avenue. Yeah, W L, I think a lot of entitled.
So that need upgrading over time, but the, I think that's to cover the first three. Um, we've got an allocation and then the other ones will happen in future years. But yeah, councillors basically had no say in that, it happened to all councils, they got gifted, uh, school crossings from a change in state government policy.
I know what the rationale was, about saving money, I suppose.
I think it's all absolutely possible to the right, um, so that people in their traffic management, um, challenge back to councils as part of managing the right.
So this is where, um, we have got this slide here where we were talking about, um, our assumption around how we fund our new assets. But we thought this, this might be the best point to go into confidence to discuss, um, other items, assumptions built into the plan. And there's potential, sort of, we might have some discussion around the potential raging assets.
So, um, if we can, Mayor, we would, um, ask someone to move to saying that we go into confidence under section.
Ninety-three, uh, ninety, part three B.
Ninety, uh, three point B, um, to consider matters of a.
Uh, that may.
Mutual and twenty, mutual prices.
Um, so please take a move on second of this.
Council Simpson, Senator Council Lauren. All in favour?
There's a statement in fact in the rec letter, uh, that there's, they service them like they're airports that don't charge them patently duties. Reality is that some of those airports are much required to screen and some of the airports that are required to screen, uh, similar to this council currently considering how good it is to pass on the, um, actual duty or not to rec. So I think the black and white statement that are there, it also not charged you is a point in time statement that may not necessarily um, um, actual, um, as time progresses. So we've put a number of, um, options in front of you. We, we probably generally have a discussion on the councillors in terms of pros and cons of the different options. Um, and, and ultimately, um, what on balance you, you want us to, to take up as your preferred option. And then we'll, um, factor that into our negotiations and discussions with both parties. One call and done, you can give feedback tonight. Um, noting if I can, um, just say that we will continue to advocate for funding, um, acting there. And not since, um, um, Director Jarrett met with Senator Aaron Grogan, uh, as recently as Friday last week. Um, and putting our, our position to a fairer centre. Uh, we haven't received feedback, um, from some of the discussions we've had with other senators, in particular Senator, um, Gordon Farrell. So we do need to follow up, um, and we also need to ask further discussions with the state government. So whilst this issue is in front of you now, um, just want to reassure councillors that we'll continue to, um, progress our advocacy base, both as a standalone airport, but also in conjunction with other airports of a similar vein.
I'd like to continue to start and alert that on this. Um, it's a really important issue. Um, we had two discussions with, uh, Senator Grogan, one was on the Friday and one was on the Saturday about the foreshore. And at the foreshore, she mentioned that while it would be included in the white paper, which is going to be produced, uh, covering the situation. The white paper won't be out for a couple of years to start the process. The other thing that she did mention is that Minister King wants council to have some conversations with Qantas. That was all she said. Um, so I put that out there as well, but I think Star had done a great job of informing us and I think they've made in some ways the decision easy for us. Would someone like to make a move?
Discuss then.
Uh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't notice.
Any questions?
Sorry.
Deputy Mayor Pond. Uh, I'm happy to move option number two. I'm a huge believer in the user. It definitely does not need to go back onto the right page. Happy to move option two.
House of Simpson.
Okay, option two.
Any further discussion?
Well, this is the levy thirty and a B, they've been part of that.
Thirty-five and forty.
Another thing is, I suppose, if Qantas do go and change their route, they might not want to come back. They might not have the constantly, you know, they miss a lot of flights now, so they might not have the capacity to come back in, into the service if, um, you know, us, us.
That's a question. I was thinking to you too. Um, and they haven't, they haven't had it on.
Uh, I'm sure of that, we just, I just know that it's been a bit of that. So I think be that if Qantas do disappear off the scene, they might not have the capacity to come back and fly these schedules that we need. Dom and these guys will have it number two.
If I may, I'm entering the, the debate of the show. You asked a question about what is the cost that we would pass on? Uh, the recommendation of the report is that we pass on the full cost, uh, which would be in the order of about thirty-five dollars per person per ticket. Um, but there is an assumption there that we are passing on the full cost to, I mean, the, the principle of user pays. Council would consider asking a portion of the cost than the full cost. Uh, we haven't recommended that, but, um, just to be clear, that is one of the considerations that council could also make if you didn't want to pass the full cost on. Any questions?
Yeah, I just think it's got to be the full cost.
Yeah.
Ready to vote? All in favour? Harry, do not miss it. Delegations for licence, thirteen to nine delegations of licences and licences under the local government act. Am I allowed to move? Any questions? So Council Westman moved, Council Inglis seconded. Any questions? House of Simpson.
We had a list given to us, not before, we said we had thirty-seven, twenty-seven outstanding fee band leases, what were they, it's fixed up yet?
Um, we're currently in the process, we haven't, uh, finalised all of the, um, updating of leases and licenses. Uh, that's still in process. This will, uh, this delegation through to the administration, uh, will help speed up that process.
Further comments, questions? Harry. Annual review, annual review of confidential orders, comprehensive report on this and listing of all confidential orders. Quite a conflict situation, anybody have any questions before I ask them over the second there?
Um, through Brendan Pean, um, councillor Inglis did in the case of conflict of interest in relation to a couple of items. So what we'd suggest is that we, um, do, uh, all of the items, uh, and discuss those and make a decision in relation to all the items other than the ones that councillor Inglis has, uh, referenced and councillors see, sorry, uh, um, and then pick up those items, sorry.
Uh, thank you through, uh, through the acting mayor. Um, if from procedural perspective, if council manages this on the basis of moving all of the items on block with the exception of items forty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty-two and eighty-two. Um, in the first instance, those four items or let me just say the first three items, forty-nine, fifty-nine and eighty-two are those items that deal with matters relating to waste management and violia. So councillor Inglis will need to leave the meeting while council, uh, discerns those matters. And item sixty-two is the one which councillor Westerman has a conflict of interest. So if in the first instance, council moves on block all of those items, if you agree with the, uh, recommendations made in the report, um, for all of those items with the exception of forty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty-two and eighty-two for the minute.
Yeah, with that, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with it in two parts.
Three parts actually.
Two parts, right. Well, part one, do you have any questions on part one? Or you, you maybe.
I'm a very big fan.
All right, if House of Simpson's moved, if the border has seconded, any discussion? No, good part one. All in favour? Harry. Now, part two.
So we asked councillor Inglis to leave, but councillor Westman stayed.
Yeah.
To deal with.
Items forty-nine, fifty-nine and eighty-two. If I can, just as a, as a matter of process, when the minutes come out to members, every single one of these items will be listed individually in the minutes with the mover and second on there for the sake of, uh, actual resolutions being passed for each of them.
Second, eight delegation to forty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty-two and eighty-two.
Not sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Not sixty-two, take sixty-two out. All right, so forty-nine, fifty-nine and eighty-two. All clear on that? All right, two move, councillor Simpson.
Move.
House on the border seconded, sorry, House on the western and seconded, sorry. I'll put you up, will you hit my little machine? Okay, all in favour? Harry. Which you get it, stand it. Right, so once we're in, let go, yeah. Attention, it's not an organisation. That's a good idea. Here's come. We are about to deal with now, recommendation item number sixty-nine. That's it, sorry.
Twenty-two.
Sixty-two. The number sixty-two, we have a mover and seconded. Move by Deputy Mayor Pond, Secretary of Council Simpson. All in favour? Harry. Thank you. Direct page one seventy-five, city growth, ordinary reports, community grants. There were two community grants, one for the Lion Soccer Club, one for the Hope Collective to the tune of seven thousand, uh, two hundred and thirty-one. Someone like. Sorry. Slow down. But we're now dealing with the community grants, one for Lion Soccer Club and one for Hope Collective, to the tune of seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-one. Item thirteen, three dot one, someone like to move? Councillor Inglis. Councillor, uh, Harry. Deputy Mayor Pond, councillor Inglis seconded. House of Simpson has a question.
We didn't see the, um, why answer with the guitar for informal media, more information than this. Well, well, maybe I have a different thing, but not a history statement, no.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
Well, for a change, I usually apologize. Excellent.
Well, there is a document, but it is not necessarily, not necessarily the right document, but it does give some information as to the. I think it was Hope Collective, which might remain not having balance sheet.
But we're looking for balance sheets. And.
All right, so is it moving second up?
It's out of another direction.
So, yes.
Why are we giving, we're giving, the public's got very new streams and we're giving a charity traction, but they want. We know the reason for that, but why not others ask that?
I'll have to take it on notice further than what was put in the report.
Okay, that's it.
Hopefully, that is actually the whole amount they were asking for, they've got the rest of it already funded.
Well, two thousand is what they're asking, they're asking, was it?
That's the way you did to go.
The point B is thirty thousand approaching, you're great.
That's fine, that's great, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Welcome.
Well, as I understood, the, the in-house support that I hope they're doing is stacked in. So they were on the page, so we're giving them both the applicants are getting the full amount that they both requested.
Absolutely, they've actually both got a lot of in-house support.
Yeah.
Um, and they're both very inclusive community projects.
All right, all in favour? Harry. City infrastructure ordinary reports, council waste services. Service spending a lot of money on waste and there's a lot of community education needed. So I think this is probably a step in the right direction.
I agree.
Do we have a, have a mover and second there? House of the border. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Pond. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Pond.
Yeah, with the kitchen caddies, um, project, we actually tried this a few years ago and it didn't succeed at all. Just wondering if you've looked into what would be different this time, why is it going to work this time? Because there's still pallets of those boxes sitting at one of the council sheds. Want to know what the difference is.
Uh, thank you for the question. The difference this year is we have a waste officer on board who's quite active in the community, uh, and dealing with, uh, organisations that, um, have some level of influence over households. One of the, the things we've, we've been able to identify the last twelve months is the amount of contamination that's, this is in our three bin system. Uh, we know that, um, waste that shouldn't be going in the red bin is going in the red bin. Uh, so, uh, with, with ESAP, uh, and some of our waste providers in town, um, the, the, what is it? They're taking the pledge, um, um, training is seen as a way of getting the most value out of our three bin system, which should end up with us saving money if we can get the right rubbish in the right bins. Uh, and then with the kitchen caddies, um, the, uh, the training in particular that seems to be taking place in the schools seems to get a lot of buy-in from, from households. Um, I wasn't here for the time when it may not have worked as well, um, but we do have this resource. Well, at the moment, in my opinion, but I don't know what the shortcomings were back in the day.
Yeah.
Right, this, uh, this report, um, it presented tonight, um, to provide some information, but we do have a workshop presentation to provide select members. We, um, on the whole subject of, um, community education around waste and, uh, the different activities of council and others in terms of recycling, repurposing, reusing and the like. Uh, we didn't do the presentation tonight, just given the workshop discussion regarding the, um, um, the idea. We didn't think we'd have the time, so, uh, we have got that ready to go and we'll be looking to bring that to council very soon.
I totally agree, the education is the way to go. There's just too much mixing up of the bins. I was just a bit concerned that if we add another bin before we've got three right ready, are we adding more confusion? But education is absolutely the way to go, lovely way of thinking.
No comments, but given that, um, I think the education's got to start with the tuning of school. Would it be a worthwhile thing to think about maybe donating a worm farm to each school to get them thinking about it?
There is already engagement happening, uh, through, through the act, there is already engagement happening with the school. Uh, when we do the presentation to councillors, we actually provide the details of how many schools and what engagement we've had, the different programs and the like. So, um, you're, you're right on the money paid from the air that, um, started. um you're, you're right on the money, acting mayor, that um starting with um younger people um is certainly um where we're investing a lot of our, our focus at present, so us, that will bring that information back in our full information briefing to a workshop very soon.
Any further questions? I'd like to first tap you to vote.
Sorry, so I was just going to say the taking pledge, um the KESAP run Port Period worked fantastic, well with the Port Period cancer and the caddy thing that we ran years ago far because it was contained in one area, it was spread across the city, it was at Hockham, it was just a mess, so the taking the pledge for Eric answer run a few years ago, run by KESAP was an outstanding success. Immediate project, so it will backen that up if you get the opportunity.
Okay. Who to vote, all in favour? Yes, thank you. Information reports, forty-one engagements for myself and Mayor Stone. Someone like to move? Councillor Weston then, councillor Border seconded? Any questions arising? Any questions? All in favour? Carry it. City growth accepted the monthly information report. I love this report. Starting to provide us with a lot more information than we've been asking for for the last few years, so it's a certainly a step in the right direction, so I really do appreciate Star seconding this. Yeah, anyone have any questions?
Obviously, I hear it's on it, so it's a great report, very interesting stats, it's a bit of information there.
Further comments?
But we're agreeing with everything you've said, uh we've been asking for these for years and it's amazing the information we're getting now, thank you.
Someone like to move? Councillor Weston move, councillor Deputy Mayor Pond seconded? All in favour? Carry it. And notices a motion, councillor Inglis, you have one.
Um for us to uh rejoin the RDA.
You're moving the resolution as it appears, okay? Is there a seconder?
Right. I have a question. Yeah, I thought we were negotiating in that respect to get involved with the IDA EP again, weren't you having discussions? Good to see you.
For the acting mayor, um we certainly had started as a gross of subjects prior to the uh local government elections. Um but it is, we haven't progressed those discussions um in the recent months. Um we, we still are engaged to some extent with some of the activities of the RDA, um but it is still probably a bit piecemeal. Um most recent example is um um the RDA EP has recently done a rebranding for the Air Innslow, it'll be a major launch on the thirtieth of March, thirty-four, thirty-first, thirty-first, thirty-first of March. Um and council will be um invited to a TMA because we were financially contributed to that piece of work, so um this does actually give us now a formal resolution to in- enact or implement. Uh whereas some of the discussions today have been following the form and not backed by council resolution. Um noting that the resolution here is to call for a report regarding um how we might reengage and what the the financial implications may be for the purpose of inclusion in next year's budget.
Now, thanks, I was, I was seconding the motion.
Further comment? Not put the motion, all in favour? Carry it. Delegations on notice, councillor Border? You need to read these out, are you happy with them? Have you got? Um Catherine Campbell had one Australia day as well. She's not here, so I guess we're happy to fat, any questions without notice? Councillor Simpson.
Foreshore area, are we pleasing the dogs off and on leash type area with consistency or just on, on the on occasion we have looked at it? See, the young people who go down there for a walk at nine or ten in the morning, lots of dog gathering up down where that leads on.
Uh we do have a program of um um uh of all of our regulatory activities, I'll take it on notice in terms of the actual program around uh visiting the foreshore, uh but yes, we do have a program, but I'll take that on notice.
Other questions without notice, sorry, question without notice, sorry. Deputy Mayor Pond?
Yeah, I've got two, um just wondering when we can expect a reconciliation plan report? Uh we were promised late last year, but with the election and everything, I'm sure that got pushed off a little bit, um so just when we can expect that, and also the other one I'm looking forward to is the events workshop. Just wondering when we can be having that as well, thank you.
Uh thank you for those questions, uh the reconciliation um action plan, uh we recommence the discussions internally. We've stood up the committee to start um revisiting our rap, noting that we'll have to basically redo it. Um so once we've progressed to a certain point, we'll bring that um to council for consideration and input. Um I'm thinking it'd be a good few months yet before we get to that that point. Um in relation to the uh second question.
The conference workshop.
Workshop. Thank you, sorry, just a bit of a blank. Um uh we, we have actually got that events um workshop already prepared and ready to go. Um we've had to juggle the to diaries a little bit, uh but late, um to uh where a couple of councillors short and also with the state government's visit, um so we were planning to do that in February. Um as a, as a result, now probably slips slipping into um March, so I think it's, it's, it's soon. I won't just commit to an actual time, we just need to make sure we've got all of the key stuff on there. But yeah, it's imminent.
Thank you. Any further questions? Well, we move to motions without notice, anybody have a motion without notice? Around the reference, so I'm assuming the answer is no. Uh there are no confidential items to consider now, that takes us to the end of our meeting, which is just about seven thirty. Thank you, one and all for your attendance and dedication, thank you. I'll close the meeting.